Why you speaking poetically this evening? Let me allow the presidential candidate of the Labour Party two minutes to pitch yourself to the Nigerian people why you deserve their vote on the twenty fifth of February.
Well, thank you for inviting us and thanks the Nigerian audience. For me, if you look at the cumulative effect of leadership failure is what we're suffering today. We have a country that have created the highest number of people living in poverty, the highest out of school children, the highest unemployed youths, the highest drug prevalence in any country that I know. The list of bad news endless. Just two days ago, I was flying from Enugu to Lagos. And seated beside me was a young girl who was crying uncontrollably. And I was wondering why and I turned, I said, why are you crying? She said, she was kidnapped along with her parents and the kidnappers have let her go. So she's going to Lagos to beg her uncle to give them money to pay. But the mother is crying, they are beating the mother. That is Nigeria of today. That is, these are things, I'm just giving you an example that limited why I've decided to be part of this race. We want to start turning Nigeria around. We want to start building a nation that start pulling people out of poverty. Start bringing our children back to school. Start the healing, like he said. Start creation rather than consumption. That is what we want to do.
Interesting. You've warmed the stage with your opening statement, Brian. Now that I was going to ask you, how is your campaign going? I have things looking up for you and your supporters.
It's going very well. Extremely well. You can see it on the street, you can see them, you can feel it anywhere. No other candidates or people who can walk the streets and people will be as excited as they are with us. Everybody wants this new Nigeria.
Interesting. Before we get started, I also like to ask Mister, because I know you did a press conference when you were talking about fake news. Some people who had fake Twitter accounts in your name and all of that. But it does look like that's a question I'd like to bring to the microphone, Mister Kabiru Adamu.
Your Excellency, ladies and gentlemen. These questions are derived from your immensely articulate Obi slash Ahmed Baba pact with Nigeria. Creating a new Nigeria, it is possible. That, I went through that document and I must commend you for the work you put in making that document available. I have three questions. The first one, you were silent on the correlation between climate change and insecurity. Kindly comment on this, given that climate change and the inability of governments to implement adaptive measures is likely to continue to drive insecurity in Nigeria. This is health as well as globally and this will of course impact Nigeria. Question number two.
I think they should take that first, then we can come to that second one. All right. Do you want to take that question?
Well, you know, on issue of climate change, I've said strictly, I will follow the protocols. And where we think it is difficult for us to follow, we'll discuss it. But there's already set protocols. You know, it's not something you adopt what you want, what they want. There's a set protocols that have been agreed globally and I will follow it religiously. And then where there's issues, we'll discuss it. And that's where I struggle with climate change, I don't want to go beyond that.
Thank you, Excellency. Question number two. You imply that good governance will address insurgency and secessionist agitations in the country in the long term. But what is your stand on these issues? And what would you do in the short term to contain them?
Well, like I said, in the short term, issue of insurgents and whether it's agitation or everything, is to sit down and discuss with them. When a democratic dispensation, you govern by discussing, you govern by consensus, govern by, so I will sit down and discuss with every agitator. Without exception of them. We must use carrot and stick. I will discuss with those who want to do. I'm convinced that when they have reasons, you have to look at what is causing agitation today. Is issues of injustice? Issues that to do with that, where there's the void of fairness? Issues to do with unemployment, poverty, everything. When you start addressing these issues and you engage them in a discussion, you start bringing them to the table. No agitator globally, we have seen reason, a convincing argument that things are going the way it should be, will continue to agitate because they are agitating for something. We all have agitators around us. My children, everybody agitates. But we sit down and discuss it. And when they see reason, they agree with me. But to think that you can continue with this injustice, continue with this unfairness, continue with this level of poverty, unemployment and young people not knowing where the next meal will come from, you're going to have a crisis in your heart.
What about those cases that are in court based on failure of conversations?
Like you haven't called, that's what I'm saying.
Should you be president?
Everybody, I will discuss with everybody, even if you're in prison. Even if you have been jailed, I will bring you out and we'll discuss. Because it don't, there are things you don't end up, only unless after discussion, that's what I say, carrot and stick. We must have just reason before we apply stick. It is important, this is a democratic dispensation. You don't get up and just give orders. I won't do that. I will govern by rule of law. I will govern by, say it again, sitting down and discussing with everybody.
Does that include the Jamaatela listen a little bit to World Jihad in the North East and the indigenous people of Africa?
I have to find out who they are. Once you tell me it is, if it's you, I'll come to you. I have exhaust reason. Once I know, once you can identify who you are, I'll discuss with you. No matter how, what you're doing, no matter the type of gun or car, I'll discuss with you. It is after discussing with you that I will now say, there's one government. Because I have been charged. But we must discuss with you first.
Thank you, Excellency. Number three, what is your view on security sector governance? And how will you handle this if you emerge as president, but you are not in control of the parliament?
Well, I think the parliament is there, they too are insecure. Nobody is safe. Not as if they live in a different country. So I don't think there will be a problem. They are kidnapping senators, they are kidnapping legislators, they are kidnapping president and everybody. It doesn't mean to kidnap the president now. Everybody's out there.
My name is Dr. Nduwokolo. I'm a partner with Nestea. Nestea is an international multi-competency development firm based here in Nigeria with offices across the world. So these are my questions and I wish that you help Nigeria to understand how you're going to solve our security and safety challenges if you become Nigerian president. First, defense and security sector got the biggest budgetary allocation in twenty twenty three financial budget, which is thirteen point four percent of the total budget or two point nine eight trillion naira. While we acknowledge the rising insecurity and the need to improve safety and security of citizens, there have been established relationship between militaries and defense procurement as well as corruption in Nigeria. And while the military is underperforming, we have been pointing fingers at how procurement issues have been carried out in the time past. If you become Nigerian president come May twenty twenty three, how would you handle the closed nature of procurement in the military and defense sector? B, what significant steps would you be taking for Nigeria to reduce our spending on arms? Second question. According to Nestea violent database, between January and December twenty twenty two, about three thousand and thirty-two Nigerians or people who live in Nigeria were victims of kidnapping. Considering the effort your government made at fighting such issues in Anambra State when you were governor, what would be your practical steps as a government in the war against kidnapping in Nigeria? This is because judging from the way kidnapping is done in Nigeria, each region has a unique has a uniqueness of its kidnapping challenge and this need to be solved. Policing, second tier policing, which will be different from the federal government policing or?
Well, let me start with the first thing, that of procurement, if I understand the question clearly. Every procurement, be it in the military or in any other sector will be transparent. We can no longer allow the military, anybody to operate in a different world because we don't have resources. So we're not going to have resources that people can use to do procurement at their own terms. All procurement must be transparent and Nigerians must be transparent, visible, measurable. And we must get value for that procurement. You know, we must be sure that this thing will bring the value added to it. And I assure you that nothing will be under the table, it will be open. On issue, what we are going to do to stop kidnapping and everything is that we need to go out to the root of it. We need to involve communities in securing our country. We need to involve communities in securing our country. I give an example and I'm sure somebody who is here knew what, a little bit of what I did in Anambra State. We said, listen, this thing starts from the communities. I invited every single community, we had about one hundred and eighty communities in Anambra State, said each of you must set up a security outfit, paid directly by government from our office. I paid them, each paid directly by government, bought all of them a pickup, security pickup, other equipment that was necessary. Told the traditional ruler and his system that I hold you responsible if anything goes wrong in your community. If anything goes wrong in this community, we hold you responsible. And we have one eighty communities where we have a telephone line connected and everything. If you do anything in one community, within five minutes, everybody have received the message and everything. If you have, and then moved on from community, went to local government, the state approved federal agencies and it became clear within a period of less than one year. The difference was clear. We can do the same thing nationally. There's no reason why we should not have local government policing, state policing and of course, national policing.
Ensuant in the law, the constitution does not recognize that. How would you achieve that?
I just told you what I did without the constitution. We have to start somewhere before we amend the constitution because we can't wait for the constitution or the law of us are kidnapped. We can do this, forget about what we, I'm not saying it won't come into the constitution. If I go and do vigilante in the village, you don't need constitution to start because people have to secure the people that will make the constitution. Otherwise, they won't even be alive to make, change the constitution. We have to be alive for the constitution to be changed. I'm telling you what I'm going to do, using my position as the president today. I'll sign, if there's some power for the president, it's not everything that you have to wait. I have to secure the people first, then we amend the constitution to suit it.
Would you be considering the twenty fourteen confab and tinkering with it?
Well, that one will come. Sisters that are must secure the people. Everybody will be alive, including the president. Then we talk about what we are going to implement. I'm not going to wait for anything. Nigeria must be secured and it must be secured as quickly as possible, whatever it takes.
Yeah, Doctor Ahmed.
Secured and it must be secured as quickly as possible, whatever it takes.
Yeah, Doctor Ahmed.
In twenty eighteen, I submitted that procurement, misprocurement or inefficient procurement is responsible for an estimated sixty-five percent of the quantum of corruption in Nigeria. This question from the gentleman simply confirms my submission. His Excellency, Governor Peter Obi, has given a very powerful argument that the moment you have a leader who is not stealing and the people can see he and his people are not stealing, nobody will be mad enough to steal. So you need somebody who is content. That is already an action taken, content by his lifestyle, content by his achievements, that the only thing he wants to achieve now is to secure Nigeria. And no contract is going to be inflated, be it security, be it defense, be it policing whatsoever. Successive Nigerians have under procured the development of Nigeria. That is why we are so weak. Our security is so poor. If we spend ten trillion on security, we need to extract ten or even eleven trillion naira worth of security service, security goods, security gadgets. In everything we do, apply that to the world of education. Why is it that a gentleman will get a fresh university started at one point seven five billion in nineteen, in twenty eleven? While another government is starting with ten billion naira in a secondary school? The moment you have leaders that really, really mean business, immediately, everything will be procured with the deserved efficiency. Because security you talk about is a product service, product dash service. You are buying it. So you buy the right thing, the right price. And what we're saying is that we have the records, we have the capacity and attitudes to buy everything for Nigeria. The best thing any leader can give Nigeria today is to remove his personal group and political interest. We're ready to do that. If you remove that, all of Nigerian procurement is going to deliver the service you require. And remember, out of one, over one thousand members that have been to the National Assembly, I challenge everybody with modesty. Go and verify. I am the only sponsor of the prohibition of inflated governments contract bill, two thousand and four. Colleagues, I had to verify. I was behind when I was managing director of base research. I was behind what they now call due process. It was called clean contract certification, proposed to the then branding new federal government in twenty, in nineteen ninety-nine. And then it was watered down, it became due process, which became another layer. Every ministry have their own and they just added costs. We are going to either one of two. We lower the amount we're spending on everything for that particular quality and quantity. Be it roads, if we're spending ten billion naira on one hundred kilometers of road and it is ninety percent inflated. So you either give us nine times that length of road at the same quality or you give us back our ninety percent.
All right. A lot of Nigerians are already.
And then we will, sorry, last, and then we will pay Nigerians more. We will spend more on education and healthcare and on United Nigeria. This is no brainer.
But it does look like that scenario changed a bit, but how is that for you?
It really hasn't changed.
Really?
Yeah, it's on the increase actually. But I've been able to succeed from the last press conference that I held. It has made a huge impact on twenty twenty-three elections. It was actually intended to call a particular gentleman to order. And I don't need to repeat all his utterances. And they were taking us on a very dangerous direction. It was uncivilized, undemocratic and unpolitical, the way they were attacking our personalities. It was no longer making sense, the kind of politics they wanted to practice. A businessman like Peter Obi, who was very, very excited at the oil opportunity in northern Nigeria and all they could do was to say that he was against it. This cannot continue. When I joined the ticket, I impeached certain lies against him and I saw that they were heading towards that. And particularly my good friend on the APC side, you know, on the same level. He was really, really, you know, when people think they have money, they have power and the certain authority is theirs, there is no limit, someone has to tap them on the shoulder. I did it and I pointed a finger, you do it again, do one, I'll do three. You know, I'm capable of doing it. And they've stopped, however, you know, me and my family have been paying a huge price for, you know, my attempts to save Nigeria, to rescue Nigeria. They sent all sorts of people after me. I would have been a lot happier if only they stopped at me as an individual. But you know, the thing that I was able to sort with the presidential and vice presidential candidate, I ended up suffering from a much lesser level. Thirty-five years ago at least, our dad, of blessed memory, passed away. No one ever insulted him until I joined elections for presidents. This is not fair. No one ever insulted, it doesn't happen anywhere in the world. You don't insult people's parents or their families. It doesn't happen. It's a huge price for anyone to pay to insult anybody's.
Sorry about that, I know it's a bit emotional. Sorry about that. Let's get to the very first segment of the conversation. And it's about the sense that Nigerian people are the one engaging the candidates themselves. Let's get some questions now from the social media. This one is from Facebook and is from Sarah in Yamokoff Felix in Naak. And she's saying, please, Mister Obi, should rightly tell us what plans he has for the men on uniform in bracket, our security agents and their families, especially those who have lost their loved ones through insurgency and those who still dedicate their lives to this fight.
Well, first and foremost is to ensure that they are rightly motivated and encouraged and that we go a long way in ensuring that, one, they are properly insured. And if anything goes wrong, that we give them compassionate compassion as a society by being part and then looking after their families. We must motivate them to be able to take risk for the country. We have had a case of where recently, I was telling somebody that I'm looking for phone numbers of policiable that lost their lives so I can call their families, visit them or things like that. When I was governor, people can tell you about what I was able to do for the policiable that had even ordinary accidents. We need to show them, support them, let them feel that they're part of the society, they're cared by Nigeria.
There are a few other questions coming from Facebook, but let me go to Twitter now. This is from Josie at, call me Josie. This is quite a sensitive question. And the question is asking, it says, tribal militia men are overtaking many in southern Kaduna, Benue, Niger, Platu and recently Enugu states and settling in their ancestral lands. How would these government stop the influx of nomadic militia gangs in these rural areas?
They are part of what we intend to again discuss. It's not something that I went to in, on twenty fifth of December. I spent my Christmas with people in IDP camp in Benue. I listened to them and I told them that if I'm the president of this country, I will take your issue personally. Because as long as you're in IDP camp, Nigeria is in IDP camp. No Nigerian will leave his ancestral land to live in a camp in Nigeria and will say, we have a country. So we are going to sit down to discuss with them and invaders if they is something that I will be open to discuss. And arrive at again an agreement that will make each of them to live peacefully.
Let's go to the economy now.
Again, an agreement that will make each of them to live peacefully.
Let's go to the economy now. The National Association of Traders, they are represented here and they will ask him question. Please go ahead, introduce yourself.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ijoma Amoforo, representing the National Association of Nigerian Traders. Good evening, His Excellency, good evening, Doctor Ahmed. We want to ask, as traders, we have noted your plan to move Nigeria from a consumption-based economy to a production-centered economy and it will require some import substitution, I'm sure. It's a tough process. It will take, you know, it takes tough decisions and serious willpower to do that. According to the National Bureau of Statistics, already one hundred and thirty million Nigerians are living in poverty. This will require tightening our belts, according to the structural adjustment program of the eighties and old. What plans do you have to make sure that the already worn-out populace are not cast into more hardship, especially in the short run, when you start taking these decisions? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Maybe I need more clarification. I'm a trader myself. I don't think it will require what you say that it will require more tightening of belts. It will require import substitution and everything. Yeah, okay, let me give you an example of, we can't look at the issues where, when we talk about moving Nigeria from consumption to production. There's no reason why we should be talking about hunger today when we have vast or cultivated land all over the place. That will not stop any or affect any form of importation. You know, if we stop importing food and everything, you're going to pull more people out of poverty. Because if you go like states that I used for example, if you look at the poor states of Nigeria today, Niger is there. Niger has vast or cultivated land. If by cultivating it, you're going to employ, pull more people out of poverty. More people will be employed and by that is that value added, which is what I'm talking about. When that value added and that will even add to export, I don't see why you're going to, what you're saying will apply.
Let's take an economist, Doctor Paul Alaje, who is sending in this question from Lagos.
Your Excellency, there is no economy without energy. Between twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-two, Nigerians are now paying more for even before Putin occupied Ukraine, the electricity significantly increased. The cost of PMAs also increased. What are you going to do to help Nigeria? Started intervention in power sector. Started intervention in power sector. President Yaradua, President Jonathan and now President Bouari, they all have tried their bit. But power seems to be stubborn. How do you intend to overcome? How do you intend to overcome darkness in Nigeria and once and for all, give Nigeria stable power supply? Are you going to cancel the existing contract with the discourse and jencos? Or what exactly are you going to do to make industry produce more, to improve unemployment, and to make power available for homes, for all Nigerians? Your Excellencies, in two thousand and fifteen.
Question, this power issue is at the center of our economy. We get it right, we get a lot of things right. I'd like you to tackle the issue of power. What would you do?
Well, let me reply what Paul, what Paul says first. He said it's stubborn. I don't think the power is stubborn. It is the people who are trying to solve it that are not doing the right things. We're not the only country that have power problem. People have solved it everywhere. It's not, uh, this is not a rocket science. It's been done in several countries of the world. So why is that one different? Yes, there have been issues where we said that the privatization or the process which was started or completed did not go well, but we're not going to revisit or cancel existing positions. No, we are going to make it work. What do we need to do in power is to unbundle first the transmission line. Because today, we are generating up to ten thousand. But the transmission line cannot carry that. Support the disco, we're going to support the jencos who are existing. Unbundle the transmission line, support the discourse, to make sure that at least whatever is produced is wheeled and distributed accordingly. That is the first thing you're going to do. And you have to do this strictly under a guideline, properly supervised. Then we have to open up like South Africa has done. They have power issue like us. Even when there's sixty million and they're generating almost forty-something thousand, they declared the emergency and said, if anybody can generate up to hundred megawatts without license, if somebody with sixty million generating forty-something thousand, almost fifty thousand, declare the emergency, who declare war here on power? I say, if you consume everybody, you will consume us, but we must get power.
You were in Egypt. What did you learn when you went there?
Of course, it's a very easy thing. Egypt did the same thing. Egypt had below about twenty thousand. They found that from our springs, one of their studies showed that power is a critical issue. Today, Egypt is generating almost fifty thousand. If an Egypt is exporting power to Europe, if the things can be done around us, South Africa, Egypt, why not Nigeria?
Practically, Mr. Obi, should you win this election on, in February, in practical terms, how much of power do you estimate that you'll be able to give Nigerians, say after two years of being in office?
Go and read my manifesto, it's there.
Can you tell Nigerians, who have not read it?
It's coming, they don't know, they need to be reading as well.
Since you had the platform, you can have a chat.
When I didn't present, they said my manifesto is all they want. None of our president should do it.
Now you have the, you have the opportunity. This is a people's town hall. It's for the people of Nigeria.
I said, within four years, first four years, we'll be able to generate distribute not less than twenty thousand. But I can tell you, we're going to do far more than that. It's going to be war. We're not going to, like, the first presidential candidate has said, two of us are coming from a different, it's going to be a general change. We are going to show Nigeria what they've never seen before.
We have something to say about the issue of power, because I'm going to bring another interesting issue uh from the question from, uh the second question from Paul Elijah.
Nigeria should not be afraid to spend if you're spending correctly and you're going to get value. And this is a national attitudinal uh revolution.